Okay, good evening. This is the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, April fourteenth. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's February twelve twenty twenty two revised order. Extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body, this meeting of the planning board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by following the instructions at the top of the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can be adequate. Can adequately access proceedings in real time by a technological means. This meeting is being recorded. And pursuant to section two forty one dash one of the town code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters. Town residents shall have the right to address the board on any item that requires a vote at the time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as the proponent of an item is permitted to have. So we will begin this evening with a roll call agenda. Jonathan Hankin.
Yeah.
Malcolm Fick.
Here.
Jeremy Ega.
Here.
Pedro Patano is absent. Kim and Brandy Nelson, I'm here. All right, moving on then, our first item, our Form As, we have the form A this evening. Lands identified as map forty-two parcel sixty-one on the Great Barrington assessor's maps and fronting on lands off of Aberdeen Lane in the town of New Marlboro. Who do we have with us tonight?
Brian Cassola here.
Hi, I'm Brian Cassola from B K Associates Land Saviors. We've prepared a, hi. I, we've prepared a plan for the. Say Olas, they are conveying their home and the property is split by the town line between Great Barrington and New Marlboro. And what they're doing is they are retaining a parcel in Great Barrett in, I'm sorry, in New Marlboro. To access the land in Great Barrington and but also with the house, this selling. Two point, what did it say that was two point three acres?
Yep.
Two point three two acres. Will be going with the house lot. So we're just cutting that small piece out. He, the lot is a wood, woodlands, there's no existing frontage in Great Barrington. I believe he has somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty to acre, eighty acres in Great Barrington. And he'll have access from Aberdeen Lane and he can sneak in right between the Commonwealth of Mass and the property he's selling off. So he'll be able to access the property from Aberdeen Lane in New Marlboro.
So Brian, just to clarify, are you saying that that wood road will continue to be the point of access or there'll be a new access that will? Go on lands of Mr. Seola. Between the lands of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the parcel that's being divided.
Yes, he'll be constructing a new driveway onto his, his property and taking it off of the land of the Commonwealth.
Okay.
This is Chris, just to clarify, so lots two A and two will be sold and. Lot one and the remaining land will be retained as one lot by the Killers.
And Chris, this is coming to us as a Form A because of parcel two A?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and I assume this is going to New Marlboro as well, Brian?
Uh, we went to the planning board last night and it was signed off last night in New Marlboro.
Okay.
Is that the Mylar you gave me today?
Yes, it is. It has the signatures on it.
Okay.
Board members, does anyone have any questions, Jonathan?
Um, well, I just, I, this is unusual, obviously, and obviously, does the. Does parcel two have to meet? Uh, New Marlboro regulations and, and parcel two A is just excess land in Great Barrington? Is that? How you would describe it? Yes, they are, the purchase, they wanted more protection for the house. The house is tucked, if you can see, right up by the town line. And actually, it makes all the zoning work better too. So the. The lot two A is not a separate building lot. It's automatically, it will become combined with other land of. Showed as a lot too.
Okay, all right.
And just to, just to clarify, this is Chris again, just to clarify, so. Lot one and the remaining land then has its frontage in New Marlboro, but it meets the frontage and acre requirements of Great Barrington. And also, you know, here at the narrowest point. You know, we don't allow lots to be less than forty feet and so it clears that hurdle too at this narrow point. At the town line, so it seems to conform also to. Uh, Great Barrington standards.
Thank you, Chris. Malcolm, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Jeremy, do you have any questions?
No, uh, no.
So does anyone want to make a motion to endorse this Form A?
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Second.
Second by Malcolm, thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Jonathan?
I.
Malcolm?
I.
Jeremy?
I.
Brandy, I. All right, great. Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you. Uh, could I ask the, they want to close like immediately. What is the timeframe to get this signed?
You can pick it up tomorrow. I'll, I'll really sign for the board and you can pick it up tomorrow.
Very good. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Bye.
You too.
All right, um, so then moving on to item number two on our agenda. The minutes of March thirty-one twenty twenty-two, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan. Second by Malcolm, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Jonathan, how do you vote?
I.
Malcolm, what's your vote?
I.
Jeremy, what's your vote?
I.
And I will vote I as well. Thank you. Um, so I can't remember what the right terminology is, but I think it's privilege of the chair. I can shuffle items around, right, Chris?
Sure.
So, um, tonight, our main item is the Care G B item, but we wanted to take care of the other business first. Since the Care G B item will be about ninety minutes long. So we have a standing item on our agenda of affordable housing. I did not have anything new. I think the only thing we had talked about last time was reading the One Berkshire Report. I have not had a chance to do that myself, so. I don't know if anybody else has any burning affordable housing issues that we need to discuss, but please let me know.
Nope.
Okay.
Well, I, I will add that, uh, First Regional Planning Commission has awarded our application for. District local technical assistance, D L T A funds.
Great.
So we will have the expertise of B R P C staff to help us investigate some. Creative options relative to, to creating and incentivizing the creation of affordable housing. It might include tax incentives, it might include purchasing affordable housing restrictions. But the, the point is to, you know, go above and beyond what this board has been very proactive in doing in amending zoning bylaw and other regulations, but to go above and beyond. Look at other ways, financial and otherwise, to possibly increase housing opportunities, so. Uh, I'm hoping that they'll get to work very quickly on that. I've already spoken with staff at B R P C about that. Um, and that will be funded jointly through our economic development budget as well as B R P C's D L T A budget, so. Looking forward to putting some brain power on that and having some things for you to keep, keep you up to date.
Thank you, Chris. Um, all right, so then board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. Uh, any items for anyone there?
Uh, we need, we need volunteers for the design advisory.
I have been reaching out to so many people. I think that's all we can do. Um, I think Eileen's even posted on her email summaries that, you know, boards are looking. You know, if you're specifically minded and want to participate, boards are looking for votes, so.
Earlier this, was it earlier this week or was it last week the Housing Subcommittee met Jonathan and?
It was on April sixth.
I'm not sure when that was. But I think you had an interesting conversation with a local entrepreneur. Who, um, looking to, uh, to find workforce housing options for their employees and for the workforce in, in the region generally, so. It was probably an interesting discussion, Jonathan.
Yeah, no, it was very interesting. He, he's, um, this is, what's his first name? Is it Josh?
That's right.
Uh, Erwin, who owns, uh.
Cantina.
Cantina two two nine, and, uh, he also owns Moon Cloud. Apparently, and. Like all restaurants, he's having trouble with employees and everything, getting employees, and he is. Actually, I think under contract to buy the windflower in opposite the old golf course at Eggermont Country Club. And, uh, which, I think he said it has a total, including the. Upbuildings that has a total of like twenty, twenty rooms. And, but then the question comes up whether that's actually legal. Under our zoning bylaws. To have. Uh, it's essentially would be an S R O because there'd be a joint, there'd be a community kitchen.
S R O, S R O means single room occupancy.
Right. Because there would be a community kitchen and everyone, each room has a bed and a bath, but it doesn't have a kitchen.
So he, Jonathan, just to clarify, he, he may be purchasing this building with the intent to use it as like dormitory style housing for his employees.
Well, his and, and hopefully other, other employers downtown.
Well, he wanted it to be, I think it's all restaurant though, right, Jonathan, is what he wants to end up to?
I, I don't think you got in that. To that extent.
I thought, wanted to limit it just to that industry though. I mean, with this project.
Well, I don't know. I, you know, these things tend to evolve.
Yeah.
But the, but the question for us is really is that. We don't have a S R O. In, in Great Barrington zone.
But he was. But his way to keep the, um, special permit in place, uh, running it as a, um. As a B and B is to have a twenty-eight day, um.
Less than thirty day leases on each room. I don't know if that, I don't know if that works or not, but.
Wouldn't this qualify as a lodging house?
I, I'm sure.
Not, but like, let's just hold the idea in our heads and think about it. I don't know that we're, we're not able to respond to anything, so right now it's all speculation, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, just curious about what we can do.
But, but I think it's a great.
Absolutely.
It's a great reuse of that property. So.
Be nice if something walked into town though.
I mean, the difficulties in, in changing the special permit for them was then they have to sprinkler it all when, you know, it, it require a lot. Yeah, and then that upsets the whole, you know, structure of how much the, uh, units are going to cost.
Right. All right, well, that sounds like it was interesting. Uh, any other board or committee updates? Okay, uh, do you want to do a town planner's report, Chris?
Uh, nothing much to report. I told you about the housing assistance just now.
Okay.
But I will say, by way of segue to introducing Gwendolyn and our work with multicultural bridge over the last year and a half. You know, the discussions about workforce housing and, and other things. These all came up in, in our, in our climate change and, uh, climate justice and resiliency planning. Discussions, particularly with, with people and communities who typically aren't involved in planning discussions, so. Just by way of emphasis that, uh, these issues are really important and, and getting more and more, uh, important, so. With that, I'm gonna promote Gwendolyn to analyst, we can get started. And just, uh, if folks are curious, there are two other people. With us in the audience tonight. Hi, Gwendolyn.
All right, can you all hear as well?
We can, thank you.
All right. All right, thanks for having us. So I'm going to, I can share my screen, right? It says the host has disabled it to you by. So Chris, Chris Davis, huh?
Try again.
I know. Got it. Um, so thank you for that introduction, Chris. We'll, we'll get to those findings in a little bit. I think we actually had the fortune of meeting with you all last year when we were working on the grant. But this time we're coming back and we're giving a this refresher on our cultural competence training and the climate conversations that we had in community with. Bridge constituents, community members, other committee members of the town and town employees. So we're going to tonight give you a little bit of a refresher on that and really bring you into the results of our work that we did with the town last year. On climate action resilience, suggestions and feedback, so, and we hope this is interactive. We actually have a mentee tool for you to interact with. I'm not sure if we did that last time. So if you have a phone in front of you and you could go to, um, mentee dot com, we're going to give you a code to punch in and you can follow along with the training there. But otherwise, it's, you're such a small group that you could also be in discussion with us. So you just have both options. If you want to put something in anonymously or for us to take back for data to put with the other trainings. That's helpful, but you can also just feel free to speak. And, um, thank you for having us.
Yeah, I'll just say, uh, sorry, Stephanie, uh, for, for the two members of the public, you can use the, the mentee information too that Gwendolyn puts up if you want to interact.
And Chris, can we be specific about what the website is? I just typed in M E N T.
T I.
Sorry, T I, okay.
Yeah, Gwendolyn will give you that as we go in here.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, good, good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Wright and I've been with the Bridge for quite a few years and I was in with the N B P trainees. When they were going on and finding all these wonderful different, um, ideas from the community that's not. Always at the table. So we found out quite a few things as we went along.
So are you all able to see this opening slide here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um. So here's the question, uh, mentee, M E N T I, and then there's the code that you would all type in, two seven three zero. Two nine eight seven, and what you'll see there is very little, but a heart at this point, and if you would just click the heart and send our, uh, session some love, that would be really nice. So. I like that. See the hearts, then you can see the hearts flying across the screen. All right. So let me know if anyone's having any trouble, but. All right. So you all know, uh, I think Bridge and, and me and, uh, we're just about turning fifteen years old and we've been working on social justice and racial justice work. For the, for the whole time, and our core values are collaboration, leadership, learning, integration, celebration, equity, accountability, trust and safety. The list is getting really long, but we really practiced those when we were in partnership with the town. Um, we had constituents that don't normally attend town meetings that really felt involved and engaged in the work and we had to kind of practice these principles and values as we went through. Um, we're a certified state vendor in these areas, uh, training and multicultural awareness and language access. Um, and we're a minority and women run. We have had multiple intersections with the town and different projects since Bridge was, um. Bridge started and we're happy to be here now.
Yes, and we always have agreements when we start any of our trainees and this is the five agreements that we like. Being impeccable with your word and we're listening tonight for your experience and what has happened in your world. And we're asking you not to take things personally because some of these things may be a little. Close and maybe a little emotional. We're asking you not to make assumptions like people say they know what their experiences are. Always do your best and on the mentee, you could, you could practice there. Usually that's in breakout rooms and we have people all together. We're asking everyone to do their best and participate. Be skeptical and learn to listen. When we think we're listening, most of the times we're trying to think of what we're going to say back to the, to the person that who's talking. So we're asking if you could quiet that down a little bit and really hear the words that the person is saying to you. That would be, that would be good. And this is Donegal Reese and we really enjoy, if you could get the book, The Five Agreements, that would be very good reading. And we also say when we're, um, in these, um, openings is that we're going to respect confidentiality as we know, a lot of us know each other. So we're asking you to take back the ideas and the thoughts, but not to assign a person to it. Um, share time equitably that some people are talkers and others are a little bit more quieter and they want to, um. Probably think about what the more, but we're asking those to step forward a little bit, no ones that always speak up if they can step back. Um, listen carefully and not interrupt. Let people complete their sentence or their thought. Keep an open mind and be open to learning because some of these things will, might be new to you. Be respectful of the speaker, even though you don't respect the views and we know that we're in that type of climate right now, but. No character assassinations tonight, just, just, um, be respectful of the speaker. Now we have these two, um, Elmo here, there's reasons for those. Elmo is enough, let's move on. When you think we're bogged down in a subject or in an area. Anybody in this room can call Elmo and say, let's move on. And the other one, wait. Um, it's for you personally to say, why am I talking? Maybe you've already. Said what you've had to say or you've. Done your full idea. If you could check in with yourself and see why you're still talking, that would be great. Now, for all of us to agree to this, we need thumbs up. If you agree to all these.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move into just getting some engagements. We don't want to just be talking to you the whole night. And, um, we're just curious about the diversity in the room and we, we ask people what their grandparents' heritage is, so you could put it in the mentee. And just try that out, typing in your grandparents' heritage. We also, um, could share it out loud, so we'd love to hear. So we have one German and Polish. Anyone else want to share out loud or share?
That's me, by the way, Chris.
You're the mentee. All right, Japanese and German.
I, I can share out loud. I'm like incredibly mixed European, so I wouldn't say there's any one particular thing that rises to the top.
Yeah. Thank you. Sometimes people joke around and say like Heinz fifty-seven.
That's exactly what our family says. Butts, we're butts.
So can I, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi.
Yeah, so, uh, I would say Scots, Irish and, uh, Ukrainian Jews.
Thank you. Right, African-American mixed.
No, who's that?
I think it's Stephanie.
So it, it was Jeremy with the German or Japanese-German one.
Anyone else want to share? I think sometimes we think of diversity just as being whether people have brown skin or, you know, speaking a foreign language, so it's just nice to bring, elevate that we all have diverse family heritage. So thank you all. That's just a little activity, um.
And so when we're talking about cultural competence, all these things come into play, our behaviors, attitudes, policies and systems. And it enables us, once we can get to cultural competence, it does enable us to work across those some. Um, cross-cultural situations so that we can go to our goals, we can get our goals met, met. So once you learn all these things, there's a lot in cultural competence, then you'll be able to traverse that. And how we identify our culture, I would, it's this intersection of beliefs, attitudes and values, but you know what I want to ask you, where is culture? Where is it? Where, where can you find culture? I'm asking the people here in the Zoom room. Where is it that you can find culture? You can just popcorn out.
Everywhere.
Everywhere. Give me some specifics where you, because it, it, it matters where you're going to be and what situation or what environment.
Workplace?
Absolutely, that's a culture.
Uh, before we go on, you know, I, uh, this is Chris. I'm gonna, there's only three people in the audience and I'm just gonna allow each one to talk. That's okay, Brandy?
Oh, sure.
You know, there's no reason to have it, have them screened out, so. Folks in the audience, if, if you want to talk, uh, you can unmute at any time, just, um, you know, be respectful of, of what other folks are, are doing. Okay.
Thank you. So far, we have workplace.
I mean, here, uh, government bodies.
Yes.
School.
One school district's different from another.
We did, uh, Hoosie Hoops this, this winter and that's definitely a culture, so you know, sporting groups or athletic groups.
Yes, yeah. The Eagles, the Spartans, yes, we could go on and on. One more place we can find culture, workplace, school.
Cuisine.
What'd you say, museum?
Cuisine.
Oh, cuisine.
That's my favorite.
Oh, there's different types of food. Oh, yes. That's how I entered into Bridge was through the eating. So we see we have the, um, the beliefs and attitudes, perceptions, all of these things on both sides. Although they're intersecting, these are some of the things that each culture comes at differently with a different lens. Yeah.
Speaking, you guys do that out loud, so we're passed through. So when we're talking about diversity. Um, like I said, sometimes we have defaults in our head about what we're talking about, but. There, there's so many avenues. This is, this is our beginning list, right, of diversity and a couple of them we want to highlight. Um, gender, we want to highlight is a social construct, right? It assigns masculinity or femininity, um, in its, um, binary form, but gender is much more than that, right? We have now have a gender continuum where folks don't just fall on the binary masculine or feminine, but, and that becomes the gender identity conversation. Um, but also it's a social construct because what would be considered masculine feminine or non-binary changes across the different cultural spaces that you were just talking about with Stephanie. And then, um, another one that I want to jump to is race. And so race is also a social construct and this is one that. I think is really important because people of, often attach it to biology and again, skin color, but it's really, um, laws that define race, right? Race is a social, historical and political construct and that we've been throughout the history of the United States attributing. Um, entitlements to land or wealth through who we decided was of which race, right? And that has attached to the concept of whiteness, but whiteness has changed over time because some of these cultural groups that. You mentioned earlier, they were all on the outside at some point. There are big books called How the Jews Became White, How the Irish Became White, How the Italians Became White. So over time in America's history, this construct and concept of our race has shifted, so. That's one we spent a lot more time in other spaces talking about it, but we wanted you to have just a general sense of that. And also then to be able to differentiate gender, um, gender identity, which is how our individual identifies. And then sexual orientation, which is very separate from whatever a gender, gender identity or sex of an individual is. Sexual orientation is simply who you're attracted to. Sexual orientation is simply who you're attracted to and none of these things have to match up like they do in um, you know, movies and fairy tales. The way that we're taught and we're asking people kind of in our community, especially with education and the, the people are educating younger folks to not um, kind of put these um, constraints on children because if they're identifying differently. Um, it can be really harmful to children to be told they're supposed to do this, that they're supposed to like this person or that person. So that's one that we want to highlight.
Oh yes, and, and again, on the left-hand side of the column, those are protected classes, some of them in there. And we want to caution you on some of those protected classes. Also, on that left-hand side, that would be the things that you could see in an iceberg above the iceberg. That would be the top, that very little piece, but on the bottom, which is your second column there, on the right-hand side. That's where the most of the people, how they identify, you can get into stereotypes on that right-hand side. And it could box people in and how you unbox them is on the right-hand side. And on that side, what would you be doing with the individual to get to know this information?
Well, this is Chris. I think you'd have to, you know, if they're not a parent, you have to talk with them.
You have to have a conversation, absolutely. And that's where people have to spend energy. If you box them in on that right-hand side, they're expending a lot of energy. So it would be just best to let them tell you.
The only other one I want to draw attention to, we could go on about all these for hours, age and generation. Some of the other identities on here, when you look at it from a different generational lens, there's different ways to operate. There are different norms. So the attitudes and beliefs and values shift across generations. One of the things that we talk about a lot at Bridge is the first time that there are five generations in the workplace in the history of our country. And that means that there's really five different viewpoints on lots of different issues, sort of. Um, when you go backwards, there are generations where women couldn't decide when they were going to have um, their children. And then with the, with um, birth control, people could be more in control of that. So that changed careers and career paths and the way women could be involved in work if they were choosing to also raise families. And that's just one example. Another one is um, uh, sexual orientation. Older um, gay folks sometimes don't like the term queer. Queer has a new definition and I, and um, meaning now than it did back um, in um, earlier years. And people were, you know, beat up, just like with the N-word, using that term queer. So it really triggers some people in different generations of uh, that might be um, diverse sexual orientation. So it's being mindful about terms and that they change over time and they change according to who you're speaking to. So Stephanie is pointing to building relationship, talking, getting to know someone is really the key to any of these diversity conversations. People sometimes ask us, how do we do this or how do we talk? And generally our answer is ask, you know, ask the person what they like and listen, you know? And that's not offensive, that's actually showing respect. It might feel awkward because we're sort of trained not to do it, but it's not, it's not offensive. It's actually showing respect. So that's what we wanted to talk about. And then we move into our poverty and privilege analysis and we use Dr. Ruby Payne's work. Uh, she's done lots of research on poverty. Um, she doesn't have much of a race analysis intersecting with that, but she does um, do a really good job highlighting some of the issues around poverty in our country. Her definition of poverty is the extent to which an individual does without adequate resources. And we bridge overlaid on top of that, this privilege definition so that we take it away from those social identities of diversity on the previous slide and we just think about it in as far as access. Who has access to those resources? Even if you don't use them, even if you never realized it, if you have an ability to decide about your resources and have access to them or not, then that's privilege, right? And sometimes people used to define privilege as just unearned, but you can earn your privilege over time. You know, career advancement, you know, um, when you're a teenager, you know, doing your chores so you can get the car. Like, there's lots of ways to get privileged, right? Um, but some of them you are born with and, and that is something that takes a little bit more effort to realize. But there's also privilege that you could talk about just in, in terms of access. One of the things we wanted to look at, and I don't, can you all see this? I don't know if I can, if I'm savvy enough to.
Yes, we can see that.
You can see it?
It would be awesome if it is able to be zoomed in a little bit. It's quite tiny.
Let me see, I don't know if I have, I can zoom in and.
Maybe you can tell us what some of the statistics are though.
Yeah.
So we read the numbers correctly. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm getting closer to the screen myself. Um, so uh, this is um, from Prosperity Now and I would just, I really highly recommend this resource. Prosperity Now because it gives data by town and by county. You can pull up anywhere and have this sense of who has access to financial success. So for here, for Great Barrington, um, it has our, uh, what do I want to highlight for you? Um, we have a three percent unemployment rate. The homeownership rate is fifty-three and a half percent. Um, affordability of homes is six point six higher than the median income. Um, housing cost burden to renters is thirty-six percent. Housing cost burden to homeowners is forty-seven percent. Um, alright, for healthcare, our uninsured rate is eight point seven percent. Um, employer provided insurance coverage is just at forty-nine percent. Um, and then the next column over gives you the state data. So insurance um, by employer across the state is sixty-seven percent. So there's a big margin there for Berkshire County, I mean, for Great Barrington. Early childhood education enrollment, we have a hundred percent. So that's something to celebrate. Um, um, and then the statewide is sixty-one percent. Who have a four-year college degree, forty-four percent, and that's right in line with the state data. And a little above the US data. Um, so that's what, houses with zero net worth, thirteen percent. Um, liquid asset poverty rate is at twenty-seven point eight. Underbanked, they, they, this started for um, uh, people um, in the finance industry targeting the underbanked and trying to help them access financial services, but these scorecards are really helpful. Excuse me. Now this next one, it brings the data in about Great Barrington, but according to race and ethnicity. I need to get a drink. Um. The unemployment rate is four percent for white. Um, it's not counted for any of the other groups. Um, one second, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Take your time.
Took off, thank you. Um, thanks. Um, the homeownership rate is fifty-three percent overall. Fifty, uh, almost fifty-seven percent of that's um, white and thirteen percent are people of color. Seventeen, eighteen percent is Latino. When there's a dash, there's not enough to count. Affordability of homes, um, you see this ratio of eight to one. Um, uninsured rate is um, just under nine percent. For people of color, though, it's thirty. For Latino, it's forty, almost, it's forty-seven, forty-eight. So that's just some of the data. So anything in here surprising or something you're going to do some more research on?
Actually, the uninsured rate surprises me a little bit, given the robust state health programs. I'm curious like where, where there's deeper information on how that number is derived.
So, the number's interesting, but also um, one of the things we train about at Bridge is fear of harm. Perception of harm and threat of harm is how you define a safe environment, a safe workplace environment or a safe community. So um, immigrants, because you see the Latino number is high. Immigrants that are in an immigration process um, are not supposed to use public services, right? It's the public charge law. So sometimes there's confusion. Does that mean I can use insurance provided by the state or not? Um, so that adds to the confusion. Sometimes there's lack of information. That's just one example. There's many different things like that, but this perception of what, who has access to what really impacts. And people not wanting to jeopardize um, processes that they're in may not take, may not make use of it. Um, and then I think it's lack of access to education and, and how literacy is another answer. I, I think we could do some more research about that. Any other questions or thoughts?
Do you think the unemployment rate data is um, under-reported? Uh, just being that it's overall three percent. Uh, I, I think that's as white. I'm not sure what the NHO, non-Hispanic, okay?
Yeah.
Four, four percent, but um, i- is there a, a lack of reporting that's happening for people of color?
Yes.
Or the Latino that is?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that we've discovered in Bridge when we're trying to do research is that a lot of people say if it's under a certain percentage, you don't have to report it, right? People aren't capturing data because our percentage of folks of color is so low. Um, we really advocated for DUCY to, to change that because if you looked at Monument a few years ago, it said there were no students of color. And we knew that there were people in our community in the schools. Um, so that, that skews the data a little bit, you know, because of our numbers.
Any sense of um, you know, I don't know if this scorecard includes uh, language. Um, you know, uh, people who don't speak English as a first language or don't have access to um, to, you know, bilingual training or, you know, is, is that an issue? Is that a statistic that's tracked around here?
I, it might be. I would, I would check in with like BCC. It's not something that I, I would know right off the bat. Um, and I know this group, they're focused on sort of these kind of measures of financial success, you know? Um, and I think that's an interesting barrier, language access is, would be a barrier. But I, we have robust programming through, you know, BCC and the um, why am I blinking? Um, the Literacy Center, the Literacy Network of the. Um, so we have some really great resources, but I hope that everybody knows that. Think about if you go to another country, how would you find that network, you know? So I think sometimes it takes some time for people to get connected, but there, there is, there is uh, robust servicing around learning English in our community that's accessible.
And is this data for, like, are, is multicultural Bridge the one utilizing this Prosperity Now scorecard? Or are you seeing this being used elsewhere in the public sector or in the private sector? It's, I, I have learned about Massachusetts' environmental justice um, mapper recently. And that I know is being used to um, raise awareness and engage in um, more community engagement um, for infrastructure-related projects in communities. Um, but I'm just, this one is new to me and the data seems a little bit different than what I've seen for our town and the state's data.
That's a really great question. So um, some of our clients are um, financial institutions and they, some of them are designated um, either to comply with the Community Reinvestment Act or they're community development financial institutions. And this is the data that they use.
Okay.
So, yeah, and um, it's, it's national, so they're, you know, they're networking, but they are getting it through that lens. So I can imagine it might be different than people getting it from other sources. And I know that whenever we're trying to kind of get a sense of who's in our community, we look at all the different sets of data because they're all different. You know, we look at the health programs, the schools and who's born here, like literally in the hospital. You're going to get different sets of data and we always sort of report it from different perspectives, including the census because they all look different. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So anything else? Anyone else want to respond about what might have surprised them or questions they have or research they want to do? Alright.
And so here we um, have the poverty and privilege checklist encompasses all of these things. Most times when we think of poverty and privilege, people go to the financial part of it. But there's that whole list of emotional, physical, mental ability, social networks. It makes a difference if you can access these and have these in place versus if you don't have them. So there's where that poverty privilege comes in. And um, when it comes to leveraging or accessing these resources, it's either going to put you on the poverty or privileged side. And it goes with your experiences. What are your experiences in this? And what are your patterns?
Yeah.
And what do you want to see happen or shift?
So this is, you're getting, I'm remembering that you're getting snapshots of some of the training. So we actually go through each of these areas and talk about poverty and privilege. And then we have a discussion about how does this line up with the justice work or the justice, you want to see those questions on the other side. But this is again, Ruby Payne's work on the left side, you know, like Stephanie just said. All these are different areas and people think of poverty often just as how much you own and how much you earn. Uh, all of these other things people can be experiencing.
And, and there's, there's that thing code switching. Does anyone know what that is? Do you have an idea what it is? Because you're, we do code switch all the time in different environments.
Right, isn't it taking on like, I don't know if characteristics is the right term, but behaviors maybe depending on what environment you're in. So like when I go home and visit my Republican family, I'm going to talk differently than when I'm with my liberal friends.
Exactly, yeah. That's code switching. You're going to be able to act in a certain environment in a different way and it happens all the time.
Yeah, and there's, there's lots of debates about this and this poverty privilege conversation. So you're knowing that to do that, Brandy, is a privilege, right? Some people don't know they're supposed to do that. So they show up at a job interview, speaking like they talked to their friends on the basketball court, right? And then people pass a lot of judgment and they don't even know. They could be highly qualified for the position, but they just don't, no one's ever coached them or trained them into how to code switch and that's expected. In the justice work that we do, people feel like code switching is really oppressive. Like, why can't they show up and speak the way they speak and present and still be respected as professional, right? So there's a, there's a debate around that. Um, but having access, even knowing that you're making a choice to do it or not do it, is a part of the poverty privilege conversation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We, 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 we all, we make fun of the folks that are like, oh, I'm minimalist, I'm, I'm poor, I'm living minimalist. And it's like, okay, you know, you can be a college student that, that has to live on ramen, but you also might know that you have a trust fund. Or, you know, if you really want to go out to dinner, you can call your grandparents and they can take you out. Or they're the people that really can only eat ramen if that, you know, while going through college, right? So there's, there are just different ways that privilege shows up, right? It's not just so cut and dry all the time. Does that make sense?
Are, are we, we think that code switching is something that people should be trained to do? It's a good thing?
Well, there, there's a school of thought that believes that, right? And there's, there are people that are, you know, and I'm not, I, I wish I could say it without, well, there are programs that help people dress appropriately for interviews, that practice interviews, that um, you know, there are etiquette classes that women used to be forced to take, you know? Now, you know, there's some, some colleges still provide etiquette classes. It's that kind of thing. So some people feel like that's just totally oppressive and unnecessary. And some folks are like, play the game to get where you want to go, right? And, or this is how you're successful. This is what success looks like. The deeper you get into Bridge work, we, we kind of unpack who's setting those norms, who's setting those behaviors. Why do people have to give up how they are to, to fit in and to be successful? Those are important questions to ask.
Doesn't everybody do it though? I mean, it's such a, like, so much part of our social fabric. Um, you know, if you're, if, if we want to stick with a college example, if you're in a particular club or a, a Greek life organization, you know, you're going to have particular things you do for that, you know? I, if you travel across the country and you don't want to stick out like a sore thumb, you're going to try and blend in. It just seems like it's such a natural thing. And, and Gwendolyn, I certainly experienced, you know, engaging with people that don't code switch. And you know, they just like come as they are and it's who I am and, and that's fine too. But I, I see it as such a human nature thing to sort of like, just almost as like a survival trait, right? Like, you want to fit into different groups, especially if you're new in an environment.
About thirty years ago, I worked with a woman at DuPont who told me that she has to hang up her blackness as she walks in the door in order to succeed in the company.
Yeah.
And there's nothing, there was nothing, you know, I knew this person. There was nothing objectionable about her blackness, but it was absolutely true. And the way, this white organization for her to succeed, she had to pretend she was someone else.
Oh yeah. Yeah, this, it, to get into this deeper, there's, to your example, there's tone policing, right? Or you're loud or you're aggressive, you know? For people, you know, black folks especially and black women, but other cultures too. They might talk too much with their hands or just they're used to, you know, their family expresses themselves louder and things like that. They might talk too much with their hands or just they're used to, you know, their family expresses themselves louder and things like that. So, yeah, it's, thank you for that example, it's a really good example. And so the thing is, if you're giving up your identity to fit in, it's not healthy, right? And it's, 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 it's oppressive and you're extracting something. If you're just, you know, like trying to figure out a new culture because you're traveling, that's a little on the, the more natural side of things. But what you just described Malcolm is, is the harmful side of it, right? And if someone, say someone is gay and they, they, nobody knows, right? They might have a picture tucked away at their desk that nobody asks about. Or somebody might be white passing and has their father, you know, this is brown as I am on the desk, but people don't know and they don't ever bring it up, right? So they've kind of suffered through racialized comments for decades. This is what we see when we're training, you know? And much more often than you'd expect, you know? So that, that's the, that's the kind of code switching. Everybody else here is heterosexual, so I'm just going to be heterosexual, right? I'm white passing, it's just easier than saying, you know, I have my family is of a different race, you know? So these jokes aren't funny or, you know, you're talking about my family, you know? And it, it happens a lot, so thank you for.
Nothing else to, to think about too, from the playing board perspective or from, you know, municipal government perspective is, you know, especially the last thing on the list there is the hidden rules and sort of social intelligence of people participating in a public meeting.
Oh, yeah.
If you come to a planning board meeting all the time, you kind of know the agenda, you know, who's who, you know, you know, what to say and when to say it. And, and if you're a member of the board or a member of staff and, and you sort of already, you know, somebody opens your mouth and, and, and you say, oh gosh, they haven't been here before, you may interpret what they're saying in a different way, what they're presenting in a different way. So, you know, whenever we proceed in, in what we do for town government, just to be aware of that, that some people may not be code switching, may not know the culture in which we deal every day. But they're still entitled to, as Gwendolyn said, the same justice, to paraphrase what Gwendolyn said.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so here we have the four tires. Cannon Ranch Institute had a program at Fairview Hospital many years ago and they taught us about these tires. And they all have to have, be inflated at the correct air pressure. Otherwise, if, let's say the emotional, the, the air leaked out, how do you think that car is going to be driving down the road? If that one tire's got air that's not.
Frickin'.
Yes, will. So all of these, unless you have your physical intact or mental intact or emotional intact, your sense of purpose of why you're here even, then if any of those tires get out of whack, yes, then it's, the whole thing suffers. And so we had a really good program there and we learned a lot about each of those different sections. And to have supports and to have people in place and organizations in place to help you in case your tire does get a little soft.
Yeah. So we, we've used this a lot whenever we're doing kind of public health work. We've worked on opioid and other drug kind of task force and just kind of thinking about what, when we ask people, what does a healthy community look like, you're going to get so many different answers, right? And we think about, this was on an individual level, but we can also apply it on a, on a community level, that we need our four tires in balance to really be able to have a healthy community. And that's the only way that all of our constituents can thrive is if our, everybody's healthy in our community. We, this model here is what we use. The social determinants of health and they really overlap with what we've been talking about as far as access in the poverty model, as far as what we're talking about in diversity. And so just, these are the determinants, these things have to be in order, their tires inflated for us to have a healthy community. So access to nutrition, access to transportation, access to adequate education, a safe environment to live in, access to adequate healthcare, access to jobs and work and access to affordable housing and access to public safety, those, all those things have to be in, in order. And it's more than a, maybe it's almost an eighteen wheeler, not really, but, you know, it's more than the four tires, but it's really, we have to have all these things in place to really have a sense of a healthy community. And those are the ones that I'm familiar with on the left column. When I was just Googling for an image, I saw this model that somebody had rural social determinants of health and then noticed that they added community infrastructure and race and ethnicity. So thinking about that and the numbers that we saw on the poverty slides of representation and the numbers that we know are low, that also affects someone's health, right? Feeling in that sense of purpose and belonging that Stephanie mentioned. So I think these are just things to think about when we're thinking about our community and what our community needs. When we move through our work after we do the cultural competence work, of which you just had all of the foundational kind of slides that we elaborate on for hours, but just gives you kind of a sense of where we go. Here's this equity analysis that we ask people to do. So that when you're thinking about programs or for you all approving all the things that you, you get to sit and preside over, having an equity analysis about them is really important, thinking about your own knowledge, what skills you have, what you bring to the table, what biases you might have. At Bridge, we don't think bias is a bad word, it's just your preferences and what you know. The idea is being in charge of how your biases impact your decision-making. That's why you want to be aware of what your biases are, not for some kind of cross on you, but just to make sure you're aware. Interpersonally, it's really important to have relationships across diversity, across identities. And when you're working on a project like we did for M V V Care, the interpersonal piece where the, the, the different organizational structures coming together, the town government with Bridge's community organizing piece. Having those two pieces come together and develop relationship created the information that we're going to walk you through next, right? There was this rich exchange that neither one would have gotten to on their own, right? So that's the value of being in, in really diverse relationships. On culture, we talked about this already, who's setting the, what's normal? Chris, that was a great example, a town meeting, it actually came up in a meeting we were in last night that someone didn't know the rules of. So who's setting those norms, who's setting those standards? How do you communicate what those norms are? Or are we just assuming that everybody's going to know and how are they going to know? So these are really important things, especially the next phase of this project. We're talking about an outcome of letting people know where the parks are, letting people know where these places are that could congregate with family and they're welcome and having that, having that and many different access points. And then institutionally, what policies and structures create more barriers or create equity? Do our policies and laws, are they necessary? They're just making things difficult. And being able to have that equity analysis of what are the must haves in policies? And how can we create the greatest amount of access so people, the most amount of people can thrive in our community? And I really think Great Barrington should, you know, in all of its processes and committee work, should think about this, like what policies do we have, which ones do we need to revamp? What, which ones are creating barriers for certain pockets of our community? And thinking about that helps inform budget season, right? And resource allocation and identifying the needs in a community. So this analysis is something that we invite all of our clients and people that come in contact with us to employ in the way you move through the world, right? And how you work with a group, how you create programs, how you make decisions. So now we're moving on to the findings. So we talked a little bit about climate change with the help of the sustainability, the Strategic Sustainability and the Liveability Committee, that's the full name. Natalie Naroski really came and worked with one of our staff members, Maya, and developed some level-setting knowledge around climate change. And some of the false narratives, again, were that we won't see the impact of climate change for generations. We all should know and accept that it's here now. And that we all think that, well, when it comes, it'll affect all of us equally. And that's not true because we all live different lives and have access to different things. So we really unpack that. And one of the questions we did that through is who's vulnerable in our community? So who would you say is vulnerable to climate change?
Elderly?
Yes.
Do you want us to put it in?
Then it'll talk to you, yeah, but your voice and putting it in.
Underlying health concerns.
Yeah, people already have health issues.
I mean, the poor who can't afford to move or improve their housing.
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, specific Malcolm, it's funny you say that because just today I saw a whole mobile home park right next to a creek that was flooding. And it's like, that's the kind of thing that, you know, people without means cannot live in areas that are protected from those climate, those flooding issues.
Limited means and your choosing between food and prescriptions and air conditioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Non-English language speakers?
Yeah. If you really think about, when you said elderly, the extreme heat, you know, that's really dangerous, right? Anyone else? Who else is vulnerable to climate change?
Well, everyone technically.
But I mean, it is a case where, you know, gets poorer and the rich get richer, you know, it just exacerbates it.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what's, it's getting very, I mean, there's always a disparity, but just coming out of the pandemic, you know, there are cost of living, does anyone know the increase in cost of living?
I think this morning they said nine percent, eight point seven percent or something was on the news just in the last year.
Yeah. Yeah. I looked up somewhere for our area and it was six, but it keeps rising and rising. Really significant, someone that couldn't make ends meet before or maybe just making ends meet, right?
I was doing research the other day and our 2020 housing need study for Great Barrington had an affordability gap, like between the median income of Great Barrington and the median sale price at the time. The gap was like a negative $131,000. So there already was a gap in 2021 because incomes have essentially stayed flat, but home prices have skyrocketed. The gap has gone from negative 131 to almost to negative 300,000. So I'm about a cost of living increase.
Wow.
It's, does that couple, is that just housing, Chris? Or does that include things like utilities, like?
That's a, that's a.
Total cost of housing?
Housing list price.
Oh, just housing, okay.
So, yeah, you're right that the answer is everyone, we're all vulnerable, there's some of us that are more vulnerable and some of us that, you know, with the pandemic, it, it's extremely vulnerable very quickly, right? The crisis migration that happened, people leaving the cities and coming to the Berkshires has really displaced people that we know and work with all the time, you know? And even other, other folks feel kind of stuck, right? Even if they could sell their house, they're like, where would I go? I can't afford to live anywhere else, you know? And then there are people that have been pushed out of their apartments because of house sales. And so there's just a lot happening, but this, this is kind of taking a step before that even happened. We did this kind of earlier on in the pandemic and we were experiencing that first round of vulnerability with the pandemic. But these were the questions that came from the community that already, like sort of are the marginalized people in our community, like coming together with the town. So this was a list that they came up with and we just, I think we shared this with you last time, everyone just, I'll be able to do it again. And we covered some of these, but victims of discrimination, victims of violence, we talked about seniors. Yeah. People who have, who are fearful or experience harm from racial prejudice, folks that are, have, are managing addiction or surviving addiction and they're more vulnerable to this scenario. Single parents, again, anyone with, you know, tight strings in any, anyway. And then some of these we talked about, people living with disabilities, visible or invisible. Youth, there were, we had a number of youth participate in this project and they really spoke to being scared about their future, hearing about climate change is really quite heartbreaking. Yeah. So this was a list that came from that collaborative conversation.
And I'm thinking coming out of the pandemic, when those young people were on Zoom, they lost that social contact and if these children did come back to the school systems and they really do need to connect, they lost that connection.
So we, we're kind of talking about this, but this was one of the slides that Maya and our team put together. You know, that there's disproportionate impacts of climate change, that's sort of dispelling that earlier myth we talked about. So some of the island states are really feeling the impact of some of the more developed countries. And the national level, we, you know, the water quality, there's, there are issues here in our country that people are impacted by. And then also on a local level, just thinking about the poverty that is here and how the climate, climate change is a poverty multiplier, as we call it. And one of the things we debunked a myth about during the training is that there's a perception of certain towns not being, not having as significant a population of people living in poverty as we do. And the way we always look at it is the elementary schools and, you know, seeing how many kids are on free and reduced lunch, right? Seeing all, all, it's poverty kind of goes unseen sometimes or unacknowledged, but really more families are struggling with it than we realize. And then with the pandemic, there were families that were again, getting by with a middle-class life and that were also thrust into managing poverty in different ways. And that was the uptick in the use, we could see that in the uptick of the use of people's pantry and other food access programs. So these are just some of the questions we were asking to engage the community. How do they keep cool? How do they get around town? Where do they get their food? So it's just funny to look back at these questions, we know all the food prices have gone up, we know gas prices have gone up. So everything that we talked about is in a worse condition right now. One of the nice surprises was we were asking folks and some of our participants, a good number of them were immigrants. And when we talked about how do we keep cool in the summer, they had natural ideas coming because of the climates they came from. And that was a nice exchange and actually some nice strategies to share with us that, you know, may not be how we think about it because we've been in New England where we don't really deal with that type of extreme heat. So that was nice. And so here are two, ten insights that we came up with as a group out of the conversations. And I think they're just, they're really, they apply here for climate work and then they apply across the board, just being in community together. The first one is people living with vulnerabilities are most vulnerable to climate change. So we've just been going through that.
And we're, we're asking to center these underrepresented voices. Because once we center, bring those to the center where they're marginalized and visibleized, we can get a more accurate of what is affecting people. And we also need to build trust. I see that there because at the beginning of the pandemic, some of these organizations had more trust than others. And people were going to those organizations and telling their friends.
And this slide says it's not just about carbon emissions. And this one, I think, really impacted, when we named ourselves K R G B, is Climate Action Resilience and Equity, it really brings this, this into light, right? The K R G B concept is that, yes, we need to think about carbon emissions, yes, we need to think about flooding. And we also need to think about people, right? We need to think about these vulnerable communities, how they've been resilient, we can learn from that, right? It's not just kind of being, feeling sorry and panicked about it, but it's also learning about how these communities have been resilient so far. And then also thinking and understanding, there's a lot of wisdom that can come from talking to these families and bringing their experience to the center. So climate work isn't just about attacking carbon emissions, it's about really being in a relationship with the most vulnerable. This is you.
Yeah, and we are all experts in our own experience. We know what we've been living, we know what affects us, the extreme heat or the seasonal change. So looking at what the people bring of their own experiences and listening and believing it.
Repairing relationships, so this is an important one. This says conventional environmental solutions often overlook what is most needed, which is to repair relationships between people and people and between people and the earth. And Black and Indigenous cultures have legitimate reasons for fear and mistrust. And their shared experiences demonstrate the harmful impact of exploitation and extraction of humans and natural resources. When we were talking in the diverse communities, some people feel like they've been kind of taken away from their land and their connection to the land and, and needing to struggle to get by. And then we don't really respect Indigenous practices around land and respecting the land and all that repair needs to happen. So repairing sort of what oppression and racism has done to individuals and also repairing. Has done to individuals and also repairing our relationship with the land, treating our land all around us, you know, with reverence. Was a big topic and we can learn from Indigenous cultures and other cultures about that.
And food justice is social justice. I remember in the, in the first phase of that pandemic and the. Food pantries were giving out food and we were trying to get food to these different families. We forgot that the cultural humility was missing. So those families that were used to their cultural foods, they weren't getting it. And they spoke out and said, you know, we can't use this food. So we had to back off, get the food that people were. Used to eating and not just the pastas and spaghetti and. And, and that made a big difference. It really did. I, I'm, I keep saying to Glenn, I wonder how our health got better. Cause fresh food and food that was delicious and it was culturally competent. I, it was beautiful to see once that got switched around.
Yeah, it was, we have a whole training on this. It's so hard to just say that and go away, but yes, it is very, it is very.
It's a real challenge.
Climate change concerns exist in all communities. So again, there's, the, the, the reason why this is being driven home is because. The stereotype or the myth was that people of color don't get involved in climate change work. That was the, that was the belief. And so how are we going to get them involved was the kind of approach. And so we were debunking that, that there actually were concerns. There was wisdom in the group. There, there's been wisdom that's sort of been extracted from the group or been cut off and then. People aren't thinking about it. Sometimes they can't afford to put their time and attention there because of the way that they have to live and the ways that they're struggling to make. Day to day, the day, make the day to day work, but it's not that they don't care. So that was something, it's just a myth that had to get debunked because it was an assumption that was, we started.
And. Get a reliable transportation in Berkshire County. I mean, when, when I learned that to transfer from Williamstown. Or North Adams to Pittsfield, sometimes there's bike transfers. I did not know that coming from Pittsfield to Sheffield or Great Barrington, that you had to. Stop here at the Lee outlet since that bus would just stop there. And if you didn't know that, you were stuck there and you're trying to get to Great Barrington. So yeah, reliable transportation is definitely an issue and a big challenge in Berkshire County. All the way around.
And then the concluding thought is that we have to do things differently. And I think we did in our project last year. It was really a beautiful connection. I'm excited about what we're about to do together for the next couple of weeks and I'm. I think it really worked. People felt seen. I think people understand the government, the town government a little bit. Chris is a real person, you know. That likes food and has a dog. You know, it's, it's really nice to, to have that relationship building. So I think the project worked really well. Yeah, I think that that's a model that we could continue to try to do and work with the town. Yes. All right. So those were the ten insights. So then we went into the next part of the project, which was. Many of you might be familiar with the SWOT analysis. And the work that we do at Bridge, we bring a positive site framework to work. So we get rid of the threats and we talk about opportunities. So this is a SOR model. Um, strengths, opportunities, aspirations and results. And we looked at, these central themes came out of this process. We're looking at climate resilience and action. Belonging, healthy living, healthy living solutions, partnerships and strategies. And so to get all those conversations, we kind of squished aspirations and results together in that model. And really looked to be able to identify by the end of it, climate resilience and equity outcomes out of the Care GB project. And all of that, we decided had to have mutual respect, trust and safety at the center. So that was, that was out of our conversation together. And so this part we're going to go through, it's really walking through. The key issues that came up in the research that we did with the group. What existing models, you know, exist out in the world that we might be able to borrow from? What are some necessary resources we need in our community to make, to address these issues? What might be some feasible projects? That's where the sustainability committee and Chris really put their head around the feedback from the community. And then also Maya and our team did some research of some models. And then what would be the benefit if we were successful? So the four areas that we looked at was transportation, housing, food access and sovereignty, and food sovereignty and open spaces and parks. Out of all the conversations that we had, these were the four areas that we wanted to work on. So the first one was shared transportation.
How would these, the costs, the seasons, who's going to run on and the young people saw bikes and scooters. Saw that we'd have to get a capital, raise capital for that, for the maintenance and vehicles that we would be using. We could use ride chairs. I know with the laundry mat being shut down and. At Big Y, people are sharing to go to the laundry mats right now. Well, these are some benefits. And we could make those networks work. I, I see that it is on the, on Barrington, the, the Facebook where the people are connecting. And trying to get rides.
Did you engage the transportation committee, Chris? I imagine they, they did, right?
We didn't have them, sorry, we didn't have them in, in the room, but the expertise that we. Had with the town staff and committees who are involved. Were able to speak to the existing transportation opportunities and constraints. In Berkshire County.
But this is, this is all good. I mean, what we're hoping is that this, these, this work kind of carries on, you know, so there's still opportunity to.
Yeah, and I, I could. Well, after you get through these, I could talk about each one, give you thirty seconds of what we're doing in each.
Okay. You want to, you want to do it at the end? So for housing.
Yeah, there were many things that were happening in the housing, the emergency rental assistance. With the construct was very instrumental in that. And we're doing pathways to wealth building through owning houses. Is that the, that's the construct, construct the CPA funds, construct. And centering non-homeowners, those are your renters. And I, I see Great Barrington's working on that long-term and short-term rental.
Previewed this in the beginning, that this is predates the discussions that are happening right now. But please remember, it's coming from the community that's most vulnerable, talking about what their concerns were, right? And then, and so just like your example, Brandy, of the mobile home, like there's a concern about secure housing, safe housing, affordable housing, right? So I think it's good that we're having the conversations we're having. It's necessary. And so there's some of the feasible projects where tax incentive for renting. That out, what does that say? Outlong? For renting out long-term at affordable rates, right? So really offering to homeowners, hey, if you can rent out at a. But guaranteed a longer term, can you do it at a lower rate by offering tax incentives? And some of the potential benefit would be reduced emissions, household costs would lower, better health access, community networks and social awareness. Some of the feasible projects would be to advocate for that tax incentive, readjust public forms for accessibility, use public properties for housing. Yeah, and some of the benefits would be increased housing opportunities, safety, permanentism, belonging, reduce transportation costs, reduce homelessness displacement. And again, this happened before people were getting displaced. So food access and sovereignty, some of the issues were, okay, even if we get the food, where are we going to put it? Cause there was some, there was an abundance of food beginning to come into the community, but there was a lot of places to keep it and store it. And then people that wanted to prep food either for small businesses or for their family and community, we needed kitchen space for that. And then garden spaces, like who would actually, you know, it's nice to think about community gardens, but ultimately there's a. Belief that somebody needs to be responsible or staff them and we're, who could do that? Some existing examples are the use of town-owned land or private to create space for. Growing food or storing food, personal gardens, supporting people getting raised beds at their homes, garden shares, the farm shares. Some of the resources we need would be land, startup costs and seeds, proceeds, training on how to farm and garden. Staffing for those who have the need but need to work, so don't have the time to do it. And then volunteers for the food distributions that are already happening. Cause it's, and that's still going on. Some of the feasible projects were land and kitchen space, community groups working together, a grant to study, and I think this work is underway. Another thing was a walkable hub for recycling. And this was really one that we hope we get to. And maybe whoever hears this training, somebody will say, I want to do that, but really making sort of edible trails and labeling native, native plants in the open spaces. So people can really get to know our actual natural resources here, actually having a community compost drop off. And obviously some of the benefits, benefits would be reduced food costs, increased access to healthy food, healthier families, community building, cause you'd be doing work together. And being able to preserve food if we had the space to put it. There'd be more food access throughout the winter months too. And this last one was parks and open spaces, which is. Oh, I guess, Chris, you'll talk about what we're doing, but the key issues were lack of knowledge of where the parks are and. And but they are conveniently located. Chris was reassuring us, but are they welcoming was another question. Existing examples of, that exist in other communities, there's bilingual signage. And there's spaces that exist to serve community needs and desires. So in those spaces, people find access to resources that they need. Whether it's other community service organizations or supplies or things like that. And some, some of the things that we need is the town. Would need to have resources, funding available for new parks and for improvements. And Chris was also saying that the parks were five to 10 minutes away from most GB residences. So we're kind of well set up. For this to be an, an easy win kind of. Feasible projects, improve the parks and playgrounds that we have, make them all safe and inviting. And accessible, make, create learning environments, which you see with Berkshire Natural Resource Council, how they have the story walk, like doing more things like that. So that when people are out, they're actually able to. Learn in community and with their families. Maybe we can purchase more land for additional parks and space. And create a welcoming town green or gathering space for all. Some of the benefits would be cooling spaces in the shade or in the water, trees, more trees that would capture carbon. Open space can absorb some of the flood threats and heavy rain. Space for health and recreation, community gathering, education and festivals, having fun. So Chris, you're up, you want to talk about?
Thank you. I'm, I'm struck, first of all. By how each of these four areas, the transportation, housing. Actually, Gwendolyn, could you go back to the slide that shows all four? Transportation, housing, food access and open space parks. How critical each of those is to how we as a community or any community deals with. A changing climate. And how we provide access and opportunity and justice for people within our town who aren't traditionally represented. I'm, I'm really psyched to say that there are initiatives in each of these four areas that are underway and, you know. Let's be honest, each one is going to be an ongoing. Area where we need a lot of effort over the long term in order to achieve some really meaningful success. But each one also has some short-term things happening now. When we first started tonight, I. Let you know that we have assistance to explore some of these interesting housing options, incentives and, and grants and things like that. And the, the short-term rental thing is also being discussed. But yeah, let's not get into that today. So housing, you know, we have some things happening now. There are some long-term things that we need to do. And some of you are serving on boards and committees here and elsewhere to, to deal with the housing issue. Transportation too, there are some really long-term things that need to happen, but already in, in town hall, we have. Interns working on other types of transportation options, including a microtransit option. That would work with our senior center vans and integrate with the BRTA long county-wide bus routes. So something that's much more flexible and much more on demand to get to employers, the hospital, et cetera. In terms of food access and sovereignty, when Glenn, Glenn was talking about that, she mentioned we had a grant and a project underway. We had just received the other day, the report from the Conway School for GBGB, Growing Better, Great Barrington. So we're going to issue that very soon to the community with a press release. We did additional community engagement work on that and we talked to a lot of our food partners and our community. Service partners on. Talking about the food system. And each one of these is interrelated. You can't get food if you don't have your transportation, you know, work good as a farm. If you can't house the farm workers, you know, so we had all these conversations and if you don't have the open space. That is farmable, for example, it's wonderful to have all kinds of state forest and protected land, but if that's not available to produce. Food. You know, you know, that's, that's also a resource we need. So we need to think about how to use that. So all these are interrelated. Lastly, in terms of the open spaces and parks and Gwendolyn, I don't know if you want to say anything about May 5th, but we are now developing. Through the Parks Commission and a consulting team, an online interactive parks map. And we will soon produce a brochure, bilingual brochure highlighting our parks. So we're trying to get the information out there and as we move forward and planning on. Answell park improvements, we'll be sure that it's not only inclusive in terms of being accessible for people with disabilities and kids and people of all ages. But it's also bilingual. There's information about what we're doing in terms of the stormwater rain gardens, what those are and what they do. So it'll, our goal is to, to make the parks and open spaces welcome, accessible, you can find them. And that we can get there, they're, they're welcoming to. So I'm really excited to talk about all these things. This is, this is when I really love planning, when I can. Do lots of these things that, that matter a lot. To our community, both in the short and long term. And it's exciting to have the amount of. Community planning, local expertise underlying all of this work. So. Gwendolyn, thank you for sharing this with us tonight.
Thank you. I mean, that's great to hear the updates on all of them and. I, that would be something nice to bring back to the groups that did all this work with us, because I think that, that would be really encouraging that they were heard, you know? So I'm really excited to take all that back. And May 5th, you, you mentioned. The bridge is working with the Mahawi and UMass Public Health Institute with putting. I'm sorry, what am I going to say? There's a documentary called The Mosaic debuting. And it's about public health and systemic racism and Bridge is featured for some of its food access and sovereignty work. That we've done with. Some of the Black elders in our community and also some of the youth work we've done. We have one of our. Immigrant youth from To- ToCo that runs our summer program and supports many of the leaders that participated in this program. Many of the youth leaders that participate in this program, they're featured in this documentary, their stories are. So the Mahawi and Bridge are hosting it and the town. Is coming, is joining in to share the parks information because we'll have a very diverse group of people participating. And it really is reinforcing that belonging and relationship building. So we're really excited about partnering with the Care GB and UMass Public Health Institute and the Mahawi and creating sort of a. A celebratory moment on May 5th. It also happens to be Cinco de Mayo. So some of the constituents that we work with are. Making food from their country or sharing aspects of, of the holiday with us. So it'll be a really nice community event. So we hope you all are at Giggle Park around four thirty, five o'clock on May 5th to kind of. Um, so we hope you all are at Giggle Park around four thirty, five o'clock on um, May 5th to kind of celebrate and we'll celebrate the work that we did together. And also you'll see the mosaic and it features not only Bridge, but a few other Western Mass organizations working on public health, so it'll be interesting, so.
And Gwendolyn, could you just repeat the part? Did you say it's a documentary?
It is.
Okay.
The UMass Public Health Institute interviewed Bridge and three other organizations in Western Mass. And um, when they wanted, they approached us, they um, wanted an intergenerational conversation about public health and um, systemic racism. But again, everything has this context of the pandemic, so we were in the middle of the pandemic and in the middle of delivering our mutual aid program and it was in the summertime, so Florence was here and working with our youth leaders who had participated in um, this uh, K R G B process, so it's a really nice convergence of all the work and yeah.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks. We're excited. And we're almost done, so I know it's late, let me, this last piece, that, that was a nice conclusion, we had a, we have an alternate ending here. This was just when, when the community was asked all that, after going through all that, the last piece is where should we focus our energy? And um, where they wanted to see the most focused, you can just see how it was ranked here, and I just think this is again, interesting for you to see the community voices and um, again, when it's distilled down to the four areas, it sounds like um, there's action in all the areas, so that's really exciting. But this is how we arrived at focusing at those, so I want to, I want you all just to weigh in now on what you think is the most important. It's the same process we did for that previous slide. From the mo- everything's important, so it's like important to most essential. Um, so which ones would you rank as needing to put our energy into? This is in the mentee.
I can just say I'm biased to infrastructure. It's not sexy, you don't see it, but it delivers clean water and takes away poo, so.
Yeah.
You know, underappreciated, but housing, I think, is huge.
Yes. I think infrastructure, just we needed like another round of education for community members.
I know.
You don't see it, but it's like.
That's true, I know. You do see the clean water, right? And we don't live in a country where like your toilet empties into the gutter, so, which is good.
It's hard to pick just one. I mean, they all, they all have to be there, right? Wow, look at that.
This is, I think maybe I just like this mentee tool. I always like people to do it to watch the. Yeah, so while you all are doing that, that's pretty much the end of our presentation and I'm just curious um, what your reactions are, like how, how was this for you?
I'm, I'm curious, uh, in, in terms of housing needs, uh, you never mentioned, I don't think, increasing wealth as primary need.
Oh, yeah, well, definitely.
Well, that seems like there's a definite uh, conflict between housing as a, as a human need and housing, housing as a source of wealth.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a basic need, right? And um, and we are ultimately displacing people at a rate that we not, and we're not able to house them anywhere. That, you know, housing was a crisis before the pandemic, so yeah.
Do you want to stop your screen share?
I want to see the bars and then, yeah. Yes. So, yeah, I'm just curious to go around and see, I know some folks have been quiet tonight. Jeremy especially, Jeremy went through the whole K R G B process with us, so. And Jeremy, how was that? Are you there? Oh, you're muted.
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, I know, it was really great. Yeah, I mean, especially in the beginning part, it was like, um, you know, I mean, uh, going through privilege, it was, it was very illuminating. Knew it was privileged to begin with, but then it was how privilege affects things. And just, I guess, to go back to um, I, I think housing and the uh, comment that um, Malcolm had made. I mean, housing is the, the um, I don't know, easiest, but um, it's the way, the way to um, to increase wealth easily. Because it's, it's generally a safe, uh, I guess, especially in Great Barrington, it's a safe place um, uh, to put your wealth. And so, yeah, I mean, I, I think housing is, is very important.
Yeah, we needed to distinguish between housing and homeownership, right? So people, some people just don't have basic housing, right? And then there's the homeownership piece, and I like the idea of trying to come up with the tax incentive and really advocating for that, that people, you know, that they, you know, they get some kind of tax for, for.
It didn't, tax-funded creation of um, housing for homeownership. Not to beat a dead horse.
I know, Jeremy.
Okay, James, I have to stay in every meeting, so I.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I think it was awesome. Uh, Chris, I appreciate not talking about the short-term rental, thank you. I do, I have set a tax incentive to, for multi-dwellings to give the opportunity for people to afford rent, so they can be housed in Great Barrington, it's a great idea. I think there was, there is talk of changing the tax structure and increasing taxes on multiple, multiple family dwellings, which, which I think would be counterintuitive. Transportation, I thought, is definitely something that we should, we should fix in the area, because I see plenty of people waiting at the bus stop at, you know, five o'clock in the morning and then trying to get to their jobs on time. Maybe having the buses have some kind of alert or some kind of device to, to tell people where the bus is, so at least give more of awareness, you know, instead of waiting twenty minutes, they can wait ten or five in the cold or in the heat. But I just want to say, I thank you very much, Gwendolyn, for this presentation. I think it was awesome.
Thank you. We're going to go around, around the, around the Zoom.
Do we, do we need for the record, do we need uh, names?
Oh, you're right. I apologize. Yes, this is James Garzone, eighty-four North Plain Road. Thank you.
Jonathan, anything else?
Yeah, well, obviously housing is a critical issue. But you didn't, you didn't talk about vocational training.
Yeah.
Which is a critical element in terms of the cost of housing here, because we don't, we're not training enough young people to go into the field. And so wages are skyrocketing, skyrocketing in construction and you can't find anybody to do anything. And so that's an important element, I think.
Yeah, you're right. Education and training didn't come up much as a conversational piece of. That's odd in a bridge space, but we haven't, you're right, that that would, that is a, a pathway that, I mean, we need that, right? Our workforce is in terrible trouble now, now, I'm sure if we had this whole process now, I'm sure that um, training and workforce issues would come up.
There, there is Jonathan, a program at the high school called Pathways to the Trades that several of the local building contractors have collaborated with the school. And, and it's just interesting, a lot of the kids just don't seem to have interest in trades. But, you know, I was even talking to my husband last week about whether or not they're seeing any opportunities to hire any new graduates. I mean, because you can have a good living here in the Berkshires, working in the trades, um, and a lot of the folks are, um, who are established are aging out and their kids maybe aren't taking over their businesses, so. It's definitely a challenge, but there, there is a program, I just don't know, you know, why it's not as more popular than it, than it is.
Anything else, Jonathan, about the presentation tonight that stood out?
Well, it's a long presentation. It's a lot of information.
I, I've been through it a few times now with different boards and of course, the trainings last year. And you pick up something new every time, and you remember, oh yeah, we did talk about that, or we didn't talk about that. So it is long and thank you for, for sticking in there. I think it's really important, but. Yeah, and there's a lot of concepts to come back to that, to use as touchstones for our work. And, and to keep talking there.
Yeah, and I'm really, I'm proud of Great Barr- go ahead.
You also didn't talk about farming.
Farming?
Yeah.
Well, that's sort of, the food, the entire food access sovereignty piece, it's, it's really about that, like having access to land to farm. Um, and there's some town initiatives and Bridge has some initiatives, so that, that really was like for Bridge, that was our biggest action item, was how to have, get people access to land so they could grow their own food and have access and maybe create business, you know, have entrepreneurial endeavors after that. So we're working on that, so that really was a big outcome of this. And but what you just brought about the trades, I, I just decided not to say it, but that's what we used to say about farming, like no one raises their kids to be farmers anymore, and a little millennial generation shifted that back a little bit, right? But, um, and so now you're seeing it with, like what you brought up about the trades, so yeah.
Yeah. You know, each, uh, we have on the agenda, the standing, I am on affordable housing, but over the next few meetings or months, you know, I should update you on the G B G B, the Growing Better Great Barrington farming and land access plan. Um, our transportation efforts and our, our parks and open space. I mean, this board deals with all of that in one way or the other, so. Brandy, maybe we can work to.
Thank you. And then Kim, Malcolm, any last words? Brandy?
Oh, this has been illuminating. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, do you want to share anything? No? Okay. All right.
Thank you. We really appreciate it, Stephanie and Gwendolyn.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a lot of work.
Keep up the good work.
Could you send me the slides, Gwendolyn, when you have a chance?
Yes.
Would you send me or tell us, Chris?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
All right.
One, 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 one more thing?
Yes.
Which uh, prior to this meeting, I was at a meeting in, a Zoom meeting in Monterey with a psychologist who's been called in to try to straighten out all the conflicts in town between the employees and the select board and select board members and everything. It's a mess.
Yeah.
And um, I don't know if it's available, but it, she talked about dignity as the basis for moving forward, and I think it, it was a very illuminating discussion. And if you get access to that, I think it's really worth uh, looking at.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'll check it out. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Gwendolyn.
Yeah.
All right, good to see you.
Take care. Thank you. All right, so uh, resuming our regular meeting at seven forty-four. Uh, our next item was citizens speak. I don't know if citizens, I think we have one, James, you see. You're hanging on, you're almost an honorary board member for hanging on.
You can be a real board member if you want to.
Yeah, we're looking for. Is there no citizen speak? All right, hearing none then, guys, we'll adjourn at seven forty-four. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thanks, Cam. Thanks, Chris.
Good night.
Yeah, good night.
Good night. I'll see you all in a couple of weeks.